Okay, I have a brief announcement for the record. Perry City Council rules provide that the Mayor Pro Tem shall preside in the absence of the mayor or at the call of the mayor even if the mayor is present at the meeting. In accord with council rules, I call upon the Mayor Pro Tem to preside at this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Let's see.
I have a question.
Yes.
According to the rules, how does the vote go? So she runs the meeting, but she still gets the vote, or you vote in her place? How does that work?
She and I have already discussed that. She's a council member.
Well, we would vote.
I know, but for my...
She's a council member.
So I get...
She's always a council member.
Yeah, I will still vote. Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, thanks for clearing that up. Okay, as always, we start with an invocation. We had invited Mount Home Church of Williamson. Is the representative here this evening? Not this evening, okay. Is there someone from the general public who would like to lead us in an invocation before the meeting?
This is Shaw. This is Shaw.
Yes? All right. Thank you very much.
Put it on, she'll do it.
Thank you.
I will do it.
She likes cheers and applause prior.
I like you, Chris. I'm always happy to just talk about you. Father, we thank you. Bauer had some prayer. Father, we thank you for this evening. I thank you for the friendship here. There's some great people sitting here tonight. We love them all. We may have different opinions, but you know, we walk away friends hand in hand. Father, we thank you for this evening. May we get the business done here tonight in a good, cordial way. And though we might not always agree, but we always do things that are best for the city and for the citizens. Thank you for your hand upon this meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Thank you for stepping in.
Yeah.
Okay. We are at 7:01, so I will call this meeting to order, the March 5th, 2020 meeting of the Perry City Council. We should start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. You may proceed. Right. The next order of business will be to do the roll call. So for our council members... Oh, are you going to do that? Okay, Devin? Devin will call the roll. Genevieve Catral?
Here.
Craig Elliott?
Here.
Minnie Galavine?
Here.
Adam Grass?
Christopher Powell?
Here.
Terry Wood? Mayor James Shugler?
Here.
Alda Confor, except Councilmember Adam Grass and Terry Wood.
Councilman Grass sent me a text today and advised me that his wife had a function that she had to go to tonight, and he has to take care of the kids. He didn't want to create disorder here by bringing his kids in. So in order to stay home and take care of them, he will be away tonight.
Okay. So that brings us to four, so we have four, so we're ready for business. We are open for business. First, our next agenda item will be approval of the agenda. Devin has prepared tonight's agenda, and it has been reviewed and approved by the mayor and myself. Are there any amendments to the agenda or discussion on the agenda from council members?
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Craig, seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? No? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next order of business will be minutes from the previous meeting. Devin, will you please read the meeting minutes from the February 20th, 2020 regular meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the February 20th, 2020 regular meetings.
Okay. Moved by Chris, seconded by Craig. Are there any objections to suspending the rules? No? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next order of business will be minutes from the previous meeting. Devin, will you please read the meeting minutes from the February 20th, 2020 regular meetings?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the February 20th, 2020 regular meetings.
Okay. Moved by Chris, seconded by Craig. Are there any objections to suspending the rules? No? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Onward we go. Pre-approved reports. So, Mayor, I think you are first of honor for our first agenda item. You may have noticed.
I'd like to introduce a few guests of honor that we have here with us tonight. We have Perry Mayor Steve Daunt here with us, who served for many years with Chuck Mudge. We have Councilman Greg Watworth and Mayor Pro Tem Tom Sheppi. And this was originally Steve Daunt's brainchild. In fact, Steve was kind enough to make the donation to allow us to obtain this sign. So, in a resolution on July 6th, or no, I'm sorry, on November 2nd, 2017, the council made the following resolution. Motion by Greg Watworth, seconded by Chris Powell, whereas Chuck Mudge has been employed by the city of Perry since July 6, 1998, and whereas Chuck has faithfully and continuously served the city of Perry and its citizens for more than 19 years, and whereas Chuck Mudge was instrumental in creating a large hill located at the Perry Hall complex near the Public Works facility, and whereas the hill has provided an opportunity for children of all ages to enjoy year-round hill-oriented activities including water sledding and uncountable winter hours, snow sledding, tobogganing, and snowboarding, and whereas Chuck Mudge received consistent recognition for his role as a leader and mentor throughout his career and has left a lasting mark on our community, and whereas the city of Perry by this resolution wishes to express its great appreciation to Chuck Mudge by officially designating the hill Mudge Knob. Now therefore, it is resolved that the city of Perry from this day forward shall recognize the hill as known as Mudge Knob, and be it resolved the city of Perry does hereby commend Chuck Mudge for 19 years and four months of valuable service and express its sincere thanks on behalf of the municipality. Mayor, thank you for giving us the ability to mark that.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Would all our guests like to come forward and give a picture of Mr. Mudge?
Chris Powell, you've also made the motion. If you are interested in that?
Now my heart breaks, huh? Thanks, I am on stand-up now.
I did talk to Mr. Mudge. Unfortunately, they're in Florida. He's under the weather and 99 years old. His wife and mother just passed away. But I promised that I would send him the YouTube, and he said, "Thank you." So he will see. If you want to wish him well, he'll be watching the YouTube video after this meeting. And here we go. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks, Chuck, for all your work.
I don't know if anyone remembers, but the... How we got the dirt for the hill is from when we did the M-52 Main Street reconstruction in 2003. They were going to spend a lot of money to haul the dirt away, and we just asked if we could keep the dirt and make a sign. So they made two. That's how much is left over, so.
I didn't know that, that's what I was talking about.
That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. We also will have a report this evening from our County Commissioner, John Palmer.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have several things I'll touch on tonight. I brought my report in for Sesa, the Sesa Alliance Ambulance and Fire. I'll kind of just paraphrase a little bit. This is our 15th year of operation, and we were established in 2005 with the concurrence of the Perry Township, Village Morsony, Perry. We take care of nine jurisdictions with ambulance and fire or just ambulance. So we have a board of nine, and we have four. Our staffing levels are budget levels, so that's good. I think we're pretty well-staffed with volunteer firemen. We might have a couple vacancies, but that's about 40. We've had a couple of our paramedics who have left, but we've been able to replace them. And I might add that we've been adjusting our pay scale once in 19, or in 18, and once again in 19, to try to kind of keep up with the market. Paramedics are in high demand, and we are in the center of high-paying paramedics, East Lansing, Lansing, Liveston County, Saginaw, Bay City, Midland. They pay very, very well. But we have pretty good working conditions, and our benefits are decent. So we've been able to maintain our employment level, and we're quite pleased with that. We also bought a, purchased a new ambulance in 19. It's on the road now. Of course, we pay for our equipment. We save our money, and that's approximately $136,000. We rebuilt the box and put a new chassis underneath. It's a GMC chassis with a gas engine. Diesels are kind of, those units have been going out for quite some time. The gas does pretty well on economy, and there's a lot less maintenance with the gas engine. Also, we ordered a new 3,000-gallon tanker truck in, I think it was October, September, October. The chassis, it's a Freightliner, has arrived at the company that's going to put the tank on it, and we're looking at, oh gosh, I hope, May, first part of June, to have our new 3,000-gallon tanker truck on hand and in service. And that was approximately $320,000. A tanker, that's about the price of a fair-sized tanker. Where if it's a pumper, it's about $530,000. We bought one of those a couple of years ago, and again, we paid for it. We've also been in the planning stations, planning stages for a new ambulance fire hall. We've looked at properties. We're looking at finance, looking at maybe some grant money from a few sources. We're in the planning stage. Our building committee is composed of a few board members from the Fire Ambulance Board and local citizens. So that's been going on. It's been okay. Hopefully, we'll have some good answers by the end of this year, and we'll look for a millage in the next year. Also too is that with the increase of some overhead costs, we're looking to raise our assessment per household. This is about a two-year process because of all the areas that we service. We're going from $45 a household to $75. It has not been risen since 1998. Everyone around us has risen their rates quite a bit, and they're still having difficulties. We have several services in Jones County that are having difficulties finding manpower, and we have been mutual aiding several of those organizations so they would have somebody on that they could call. And that's keeping us a little busier, but we can handle that. But that's kind of the background of what's going on in that marketplace. The board's been very, very good. Everybody comes. The board's not changed this last couple of years. Dean Osenasik, another city representative, he's there, and it's been working quite well. Any questions on that aspect? Now, I got a couple more I'm going to report on. If not, I might touch about the I-69 corridor. I'm the city liaison. I'm also the county commissioner liaison, so I wear two hats with that.
You get two votes?
Yes, I do. That's how it was set up, yeah. But it doesn't really, it hasn't been what we call real active. The I-69 corridor, when I got up and going near an international corridor, special trade rates we get or trade status, it has worked dramatically well. When the economy's good, there's, at times, the I-69 corridor doesn't have a lot to do. It's when things are a little tight or things are not as good in the economy that that group really works with government to find monies and try to keep businesses and businesses and training and so forth. Also, I serve on the regional, it's called GST thumb area, and that's the Genesee Chihuahua C. Thumb Area Workforce Group Five, training for work and training for apprenticeships and all those kinds of things. Again, the economy has been really good. They aren't as active as they might normally be, but that's the type of organization that stays intact because of, if the economy slumps and there's retraining or industries move in or move out, they do an awful lot of training for those activities. But they're busy, but not as busy if things weren't quite as good. That's pretty good. That's under my... And that meets about every other month in the period. I'll put on my commissioner's hat. There are a lot of changes going on. We're moving from what we call a defined benefit retirement plan like MERS. We're moving to a defined contribution, which is, can be through MERS, but it's called a 401A, which is like a 401K, but it's a government, also combined with a 457. The aspect of the change, and it's coming right through my finance committee, is we don't really want to have any expense after our budget year. During the year, if we have a budget and we expense it, retirement, wages, structure, whatever we're doing, we do not want any legacy costs in the future. So we'll be moving to that this year, and all new hires soon will have to be on that program. And we've already had some cooperation from several of our labor unions that they know it's coming. So, and that's been, I've been real busy with that. We've been meeting every two weeks to hammer out those. Our new retirement program will be kind of centered in a little bit of the carbon copy of the state retirement program, so on and so forth. Also, we're taking a hard look at health insurance. Health insurance, again, this year, Blue Cross Blue Shield, went up an average of 11% for this year. We have some policies that are more than what people make in a year, so it's becoming quite expensive. We're looking at all alternatives, actually, all entities that fall under the county commissioner umbrella. That's like your Pleasant View and even your road commission and elected officials and so on. But we'll be having, we're doing that. We met on that today with people in the industry, and we're working on that to try to lower costs. That's a toughie, folks. That just keeps going up every year. Other than that, departments are doing pretty decently. Our legacy costs, we're paying, trying to pay those down as quickly as possible, but our legacy costs for retirement are through 3039. That's a long time from now. And that's more, our normal is about $800,000 a year in retirement costs, but with the legacy costs that we owe, we're spending this year $5.6 million. So it's quite a chunk of change, and that will not change very much into the future every year. So hopefully, that will, it comes down, of course, when people pass away and things like that. So I don't wish anybody goodbye, but you know, I'd like to have those costs come down. Other than that, our departments are running pretty well. We've worked real hard. We've had a lot of new employees and new elected officials in the last couple, the last four years. Also, we'll be having a new prosecutor. A prosecutor's been with us for quite some time. Dana Finnigan's retiring. She's been an excellent prosecutor, and she's excellent to work with. And she just said, "Hey, I'm 63, 64, I'm going to retire." So she is. We also had the retirement at the end of last year of our treasurer. Our treasurer had been with us 22 and a half years, Tom Dwyer, and he was quite conservative. And with our new treasurer, it's been a real pleasure. Her name's Julie Sarson. We now have an investment policy, and that investment policy, by statute and state statute, comes through the treasurer's office. So if we have an investment policy, it's her that has to do that. And I mean, we can coach her as board of commissioners, but it comes to her, and she's doing that. Also, this week, I've been in several meetings, and I, we're spearheading the establishment of a land bank. Most counties have land bank. Actually, it's 29, now I gotta think about this minute, 42 counties out of 83 counties in Michigan have land bank. And what that helps with is distressed property that comes back on the, comes back through foreclosure, and that can be property, that can be housing, that can be commercial, that can be apartment buildings, all sorts of activities. And it's really good for older cities who want to rehab older housing stock. And so we're doing that. We've got the paperwork. And again, our treasurer is very active in that. Paperwork has to come through her, and only counties can do land bank business. So if the city of Perry ends up with a, the house is going to be foreclosed on, and the treasurer says, "Hey, city of Perry, do you want that house?" You know, you can have a rehab by private contractors, and you can hold the property until it's done and so on and so forth, and then you can get it back on the tax rolls. It's been a very good program, and Kent County, it's a lot larger county than we are, has been very, very, very successful in this, with this program getting hundreds and hundreds of houses back on the tax rolls that maybe would have fallen into decay and ruin and torn down. So there'll be more on that. We've got the paperwork started, and maybe the county will put some seed money in there to get it started. So that's a good program, but when that rolls out, I'll make sure that the city, I'll come in early, explain it, and we'll have a committee that'll, that'll be a committee through the county of people who will meet on that aspect of land bank it on like a quarterly or six month or yearly basis, depending on how much activity. I think that's pretty much, that's quite a bit of stuff that we're involved in right at the minute. There's the, the court system has a lot of programs now for offenders, especially under drugs. That has been somewhat successful, but it's, they have relapses, and it's a very tough program that the Circuit Court judges put out there on, you know, staying clean and staying out of jail, and if you don't, you don't follow his rules, you go back to jail. I mean, right now, so Judge Stewart's pretty tough on that. Any questions about county business? Anything you'd like to know? Think about it later and in the phone book, you might just give me a call. Anything else? I'll sit down and shut up so you can get on with your...
Just a real quick announcement. In order to help the Lions Club out, Commissioner Palmer has agreed to come in May and call Bingo for the Lions Club.
Yay!
John's always been very entertaining doing that. The crowds have loved him, and the Lions specifically asked him if he could get it back. So thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, he actually said, "I'm going to throw you to the Lions," and I went. This is Roman times. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep.
Thank you for that report. Very good. I like going down there. Okay. All right, we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is comments from the public. So this is an opportunity for the public to come forward. You have three minutes to tell the city council and the mayor anything that is on your mind about the city of Perry or the county. So is there anybody this evening who would like to talk to the city council? No? Okay. We'll have another opportunity again at the end of the meeting, so if someone thinks of something in the meantime, you're welcome to inform them as well. Next order of business, communications. Devin?
Actually, there's two communications, but they are to council. I just want to make sure that you received a correspondence from the city attorney dated February 26, 2020, and then there was another correspondence from Michigan Municipal League, February 26, 2020. And let me know that you received those copies, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next will be the mayor department's head report. Mayor, do you have a report, Chris?
Yes. We went through a process of putting some items into our Finance and Ordnance Committee, but a couple of things came to my attention. The city clerk has followed my lead on this, and I'm grateful for that. Once we put it in place, she went back and reviewed council rules. Finance and ordinance being a standing committee, I wasn't permitted to simply put the Mayor Pro Tem on there and appoint a chair. That is something that is subject to councils. I have to submit it to you for your advice and consent. So I'll correct that here tonight. There are two items that we want Finance and Ordnance to take up. That was exploring this moratorium on the temporary signs. That matter is properly before the Finance and Ordnance Committee. The other item was the sidewalk display, and city attorney advises me that because that was vetoed and failed, it has to go through the whole process again before the Finance and Ordnance Committee can take it up. It has to go back to Planning Commission, who gets another opportunity to review it and give advice, and then it can come back to the Finance and Ordnance Committee for their work.
Okay. So is there anything that we need to do now, like today, right here at this meeting?
I'll do that under appointments. I'll take care of the membership of the committee.
We'll do that at the time of the appointment.
I'll make the appointments and ask for your council's advice and consent.
Okay.
And then the sign ordinance will remain with them, and we will move the display ordinance down to Planning Commission so that they have their opportunity to do their part.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please, Chief Box. Do you have a report, Chris, this evening?
I do.
Counselor. Counselor's not expecting from taking something up just because some council brought it up. They don't even have to change it. They don't need to.
Hello, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I apologize, I've been gone the last couple of months because we were on murder break the last time, and we were enjoying the time out of town. And last month was the Winter Michigan Chiefs Conference in Grand Rapids, so I was there for three days, and it was quality time that several chiefs from across the state, we all partook and learned a lot. So, anyway, that being said, I wanted to let you all know that we had an incident in December that involved Officer Ryan Collier, that he was called upon by the state police to assist with a wrong-way driver on I-69. He was up at Central Dispatch grabbing paperwork, as officers frequently need to do, and since no one was between Corona and I-69, he was called upon by a stipley sergeant to head down there and assist in trying to stop this driver. And I got down to the Bancroft exit where the Durand officer was also westbound. So they got on the highway, or he got on the highway right at the same time that the Durand officer was going by, and they did encounter the wrong-way driver. He was eastbound at the westbound lanes, tried to get his attention, obviously with all the lights and sirens, and it was quite clear that he wasn't going to avoid them, so they avoided him, got out of the way, got turned around, and ended up communicating with each other quite effectively to box him in and get him stopped. This isn't something that we normally practice. This is not anything that we can say that we can want on a regular basis, but I can tell you that with no injury and no property loss, which everybody's in fear of the chief if he damaged a vehicle, but that's not the case, I'd much rather have the guy stopped. He was stopped and he was arrested. He was intoxicated, and nobody, nobody was hurt. And so, that being said, I got a note from the state police, and I have to say, this is rare. This may be the first note. We have a fantastic lieutenant over our state police post, and she sent this on, and it says, "Chief Box, I just wanted to drop you a line to recognize an outstanding example of cooperation of law enforcement agencies. As you know, officers often do their jobs with little fanfare and/or recognition. On the night of December 14th, Officer Luke Rogers of Durian Police Department and Officer Ryan Collier of Perry Police Department coordinated their efforts in stopping a wrong-way driver on westbound I-69 near Bancroft. The driver responded to have a blood alcohol level of .20 and subsequently lodged in the Chihuahua C. County Jail as a result. Sergeant Terry Burdan brought this example, great example of teamwork to my attention and commended the quick actions of your officers, which led to end the end of a potentially life-threatening situation. On behalf of the Flint Post, we would like to thank you and your officers for making our law enforcement community a pleasure to serve in. First Lieutenant Yvonne Brantley."
Thank you.
That all being said, the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police also has an annual awards ceremony at the Summer Conference in May, and Chief Hartz of Durand and myself have put in application for a Medal of Valor for both Officer Collier and Officer Rogers. So we're waiting to hear back. We just submitted those within a week. So we're waiting to hear, and we may be taking a trip up to... That all being said, the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police also has an annual awards ceremony at the summer conference in May, and Chief Hartz of Durand and myself have put in application for a Medal of Valor for both Officer Collier and Officer Rogers. So, we're waiting to hear back. We just submitted those within a week. So, we're waiting to hear, and we may be taking a trip up to Boeing, I don't know, somewhere right there. But it was a job well done, and it's something that, you know, like I said, we don't do often, but it was a job well done, so. To follow up with that, we implemented a Narcan, Narcan, I wouldn't say a policy, but we have assigned Narcan to all of our officers, which if you're not familiar, Narcan takes away the overdose effects of heroin and sometimes methadone. And since we have implemented the officers carrying that on duty, we have had four saves with that, one of which was in the city. So, because of our location in the county and because of the lack of sheriff patrol, road patrol at night, and the state police generally being up near 21 or over, closer to the Flint post, we get called out for situations like this, and they're life or death, and so I'm not going to argue whether or not the officers should be going out for situations like this outside of the city, but I definitely have seen the benefit, they've seen the benefit, and it's amazing. We have auto injectors that are donated to us, they don't cost us anything, the training didn't cost us anything, and as soon as they inject, we're talking under one to two seconds, and you see these people coming around and starting to breathe and life coming back into them almost, so.
Is that more powerful than the nose spray?
I don't know that. It's all based on milligrams. I do know that the auto injectors are less milligrams than the nasal spray, so that tells me, in my feeble, non-medical mind, that possibly the injector is more potent going directly into the bloodstream. I don't know that, but as soon as it hits the mucous membranes in the nose, they have the same effect under the same amount of time typically. So, and we actually, we just transitioned, I picked up more, and they are now the nasal sprays. So, we kind of combination both, so the officers can use either if they so choose.
I'm just curious about, I have nasal spray.
Okay.
And so, and you get that through the VA for any of that on the hydrocodone.
Yep. I believe the United Way at the last local chiefs meeting we had was giving out nasal spray also to the county department that didn't have it. Most everybody in the county has it now, but yeah, we'll always take more because I'm sure they're gonna end up using it, unfortunately. February was a busy month for me. I was out of the city quite a bit. I had training, like I said, with the Chiefs Conference, but I also had a couple of instructor-level trainings that I was attending, one of which was for the Milo range. Milo is an acronym that I cannot tell you what it stands for, but essentially, it's a use-of-force interactive projector screen system that interacts with a pistol that has a laser, infrared laser, so that someone behind the desk, behind a laptop, can actually control over 950 scenarios and have you interact with the person on the screen, and if force is deemed necessary, you have possibly a multitude of different options. They actually have a flashlight you can use, and it's amazing. You put the flashlight up there, and it reads the signature of the flashlight. It doesn't actually emit a light, but where you point that flashlight, you get a ring of visibility on the screen. So, you learn to use your flashlight, they have a baton, they have pepper spray, they have a taser, they have all kinds of different non-lethal and lethal uses of force options. That being said, I went to two days down in Ann Arbor, actually, one day, it was a long day, and they taught me how to use the system. We do not actually have a system here in the city of Perry, but we're fortunate enough to have Baker College, who has the $20,000-plus system dedicated in a room up on their campus in Owasso. So, now I'm able to go up and take our guys or anybody else and actually instruct them to use that system. So, it's a fantastic system, great minds have put that together. I'm amazed at some of the options they have. Several of the scenarios that you run, you actually can change on the fly, and you have different branches, they call them, and you can change the scenario based on how the officer's interacting with the subject or subjects on the screen. So, very worthwhile, much, much better when it comes to decision-making than just punching holes in paper out of range. There is time and place for that and the need for it, but as far as actually making decisions, this is probably the best technology I've seen for that. Along with that, I did go to ALIS Instructor School. ALIS is an acronym that stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, and basically, it's enhanced lockdown. It gives people options, and this isn't just for schools, although it can be, and we're gonna be talking about it at the school level, but this is for businesses, this is for churches, this is for this group right here, if we want to talk about it. It just basically equips people with options and what they can do in a violent situation. So, I'm excited to be a part of that and actually be an instructor in that, and I look forward to the opportunity to go into any environment that sort of deems it necessary and feels the need. Other than that, I think I have covered everything. Does anyone have any questions for me?
That is a lot, Chief. Thank you so much. Thank you for your bravery. Four saves is a great number.
Yes.
And Officer Collier, that is remarkable.
Yes.
Remarkable.
Thank you.
He is certainly deserving of that award.
Yes, I hope that the committee at the MACP feels the same way, so.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, next department head report. Do I belting, Trish?
Okay, just a real short report. My tax rolls went to the county today. They're all balanced, no errors. All the checks, the final checks were written. I had withheld 10%, so if the county or the school sees their reports, the 10% is held until they tell me that, yes, your books are completely balanced, go ahead and distribute what's left. We had, everything was collected. It was 1.4 million for the one year and 780-some thousand for the second, and of all of that, we collected everything except for about $77,000. So, and of that portion, I believe 29 of it was the city's. So, we had a good, a good collection. So, the best, the best that we've ever had. Other than that, everything's been going well. I've been off some time. My husband has needed some additional attention, and I appreciate the ladies at City Hall covering for me. So, any questions? Other than that, nothing, nothing too different than usual, so.
Excellent. Thank you for keeping us in line.
Is there anything that you need from any of us?
No.
Yes.
Nope, I'm good. I'm good. hubby's good, he's coming along. Hopefully, within the next month or two, he'll be able to come home, so.
Thank you.
He's at Pleasant View. Awesome.
Yes, it is.
Facility. Oh, my gosh, yes, it is awesome, so.
Superintendent of DPW, John Sauer.
Just a quick reminder of the newly adopted brush and yard waste rules and policies. We sent out a schedule to everyone. Just to take a brief look at that, we will start rolling in April. The city, as of this week, is looking to fill a part-time custodial position and a full-time public works position. Day-to-day operations, we started lagoon discharges this week, so.
What does that entail? What does that entail?
We're just, we'll run off about 15 million gallons.
Where, you take it somewhere else?
No, we treat it and put it in, it gets discharged into Perry Drain Number One. It's all in compliance.
I didn't think it was like.
What?
Everybody's gotta drain their sewers sometime, right?
Thank you for keeping us in compliance.
That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. And our last department head report. Devin Miller.
Election, election, election. State law, the voters in 2018, they made a point, it was voted in yes, and so the Secretary of State is trying to accommodate all of those changes, and us clerks are just trying to keep up with the changes, whether it's through QVF, which is a state site that we use. Also, I just got clarification and a new document that I have to know that I need for absentees, whether they should get spoiled. So, the clerks across the street are working very hard to keep up with all these new laws and try to be careful. I'm looking forward to next Tuesday to spend a day with my election inspectors. It's always a nice time. We see a lot of nice people, we eat very well. If you have any questions with the new laws with the election, especially with the absentee, because there's no reason anymore, you don't have to actually file a reason to get an absentee now. Any questions? Please call, excuse me, call our office. I'm continually training the girls in the office, so if I should step away, that they could answer your questions as quickly as possible, because the state, if you go to the state to ask questions, you're gonna have to leave a message. They're just trying to keep up with all of the new technology and updates to accommodate these new laws. Other than that, 2020 has been busy. We've had business activity, been working with Planning Commission to get all the documents they need. It's gonna be one of those years that just doesn't slow down.
Thank you. And also from the Planning Commission, thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow. You're very helpful. Okay, on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports this evening? No committee reports? Okay. So, next is presentation and approval of the bills. So, city council members have had an opportunity to examine the bills, and we seek your approval to pay them. Yes?
Didn't have signatures.
Okay. Yes. Yes, okay, we're ready to sign them.
Mayor, what is your opinion? Terry signed the bills, but he left. Should I get an extra signature because he decided not to stay?
Wouldn't hurt.
Wouldn't hurt. I see no harm in that, if a council member's willing to sign off on it.
If you're willing, I appreciate it.
I'm not sure it's necessary. The hope is, is that all council members would get an adequate opportunity to review the bills.
Pass that one? There you are. Do I have a motion to approve the bills presented and payment be authorized?
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment is authorized.
Moved by Craig, seconded by Mindy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favors, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Very good, motion carries. Thank you. I don't believe we have any old business to discuss this evening, so that will move us to new business. The first, or first line item on our new business is a possible closed section to discuss attorney-client communication. I've alluded that you have all received some attorney-client communication that we need to discuss, and we will recommend that we do that in a closed session. So, in order to do that, we would need two-thirds vote by the council to do that.
I move that we go to a closed session and discuss, that council will go into a closed session to discuss attorney-client communication.
Wait a second, I'll start going. Moved by Craig, seconded by Mindy. At this one, we will do a roll call vote, so Chris?
Nay.
Nay? Okay. I will vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mindy?
Aye.
Aye. That moves us into a closed session.
I'm not sure we've got a review.
Is that, are we gonna get it?
I don't know if it's two-thirds of those present or two-thirds of the council as whole. Two-thirds of the council's whole would be four.
It would be. So, maybe we have to wait.
Exactly. Unless you already answered that off the top of your head, Tom.
I do. You know, technically, we could go into a closed session for a couple of different reasons. One of the reasons could be, which wasn't the motion passed, to talk about collective bargaining negotiations, but we're supposed to have two-thirds of the people present, and if it's a quorum, then you'd have two-thirds, three out of four votes would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
And again, so everybody understands, you can't take any action in a closed session.
Okay.
Do just a lot.
Okay. Okay, so that will bring us into a closed session at 7:45. Okay. Yes. Six. So, we are returning to regular session at 8:36. Our next order of business under new business is discussion regarding post-retirement benefits for city employees. We have discussion from the council.
So, we discussed all this, are we deciding whether to deal with the 25-year situation?
We're not gonna try to solve it tonight, and I don't know if you guys wanna send some direction or not, but.
We understand that committee's made a possibility of setting a committee.
We've got some legal advice and some of the options you might pursue. You don't have to do it tonight. I strongly encourage us to deal with this in this term. Let's take care of this for the future, for the good of the employees, for the good of the city and citizens, but that doesn't mean you gotta figure anything out tonight.
Yeah, we should not.
And we have two members absent tonight. I wish we were here. It would be helpful if I had them, be part of getting that report. Hopefully, Terry remembers it, he was here when we got it before, for added video. So, no, you don't have to figure it out tonight, but I'd like to keep this on the agenda and have the council start to determine the direction we're gonna go to find a resolution.
I'm gonna put something forward. I move that we put together a committee made up of both council members and city employees to look into the, is it retirement?
Retirement healthcare benefits.
Retirement healthcare benefits.
Policies.
Policies.
Who's gonna fund the parameters and who's gonna appoint the council to accomplish that?
I was thinking, I was thinking, because we have a lot of standing committees right now with a lot of people, two committee members and two employees.
It's totally up to you.
Do you want us to do on it? We can have as a discussion item, I don't actually counsel me.
I'll second that one.
So, it stays on the agenda? We can clearly, on what you want to do.
If council leaves this discussion item with no action taken, then it remains on the agenda automatically.
Good.
By your rules. And I think it would be good to have a motion like what you're contemplating.
Yeah.
Maybe define it out a little bit better.
Sure.
And maybe think about the process by which you want the folks who are gonna work on this to be done. How's that gonna work? Am I gonna appoint them? Am I gonna do it on my own authority, or is council going to, am I gonna make the appointments and submit them to council? Or are we gonna seek volunteers? What's the process we wanna go by?
Okay, I was thinking similar to the finance and ordinance. Okay, I was thinking similar to the finance ordinance committee as far as, and if volunteers apply from the city, it would be good to, for sure.
Would you be willing to give that more thought and bring it back for discussion, your ideas that are next? Council meeting?
Sure.
Okay, great. Okay. I'm giving you some new motion.
I was sending a motion.
You're sending a motion? Okay, thank you.
Get some more thought.
Okay. Okay. So that will stay on the agenda then for next week. Okay, on to our next new business, possible approval of police training.
As I mentioned in my report earlier, I went to Ann Arbor and went to training for the Milo use-of-force scenario, that scenario training that Baker College has installed there. That equipment that you utilize with that system is obviously special. It requires special IR emitting lasers, and that's what actually interacts with the camera system. One of those firearms is what I had before you. It's called a CERC pistol. It's a dry fire pistol that's typically used with a regular laser, and you can actually do a lot of quality training without shooting any ammunition. A lot of good trigger control, grip, sight alignment, sight picture kind of stuff. This particular CERC pistol is equipped with the IR laser that interacts, like I mentioned. Unfortunately, it's over the dollar threshold that I'm allowed to spend, so I come before you requesting the $595 to purchase that pistol out of our training fund, which was adequately funded, and...
I move that we authorize a payment to Milo range for police training to not exceed $595. Authorize chief of police to sign here.
Thank you.
I actually saw a commercial just recently where they are selling ammunition or something that you can stick into your firearm, that'll do some way to keep them out.
Yes. This actually is modeled after a Glock 17, and has a resetting trigger, so you don't actually have to cock it each time, which is a huge benefit. But obviously, infrared laser is also a huge...
And they have the idea and very consistent.
Okay, they're good. Any other discussion?
I didn't hear a second.
Oh.
Mindy seconded?
Sorry.
Nope, Mindy seconded. Okay. So moved by Craig, seconded by Mindy. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Yes, appreciate that.
This will allow us to actually just go up on a snow day or a day that's light as far as activity goes, and I can take an officer up and train them one-on-one. It's a huge benefit. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, possible approval to purchase asphalt crack machine and supplies. This is John.
Okay, so I had been in contact during the last budget with a company that we had used probably 10 years ago. It was before my time, but that was about eight months ago that I come to council and had that approved to move forward to that. I think it was, I don't have the exact date, so I haven't heard anything from them in that amount of time. So what I would like to do is purchase the machine, or it's just a simple machine that heats up the blocks, and we can do our own work at our own pace. And the company is in Dryden, Michigan. They have satellite places, but... So I'm asking if council would approve the crack sealer and the supplier to heat the blocks. This is, I think it's a good move. We've got some of these subdivisions, and all the new streets getting cracks in them. Water gets in, blows them out. This is a lot cheaper than resurfacing or trying to do that all the time.
What do we do now? Just let the cracks go to hell? I mean, do we have anything that we're patching cracks with right now?
No. There's some cracks that we went out, and they were about three inches wide, and we put a cold patch in them.
I think what you say is, were we hiring up a company to come and do this for us before, and now we're like, have a machine do it?
No. We rented the machine, and they provided the blocks with the cost.
So now you would just have?
We'll have the machine. All I'll have to do is just order new material and do it.
So as you see them come up in cracks, and you have time to do that, you can do it instead of waiting for this block to...
Right, so I have like three weeks to get it done. I can spread it out over five months. That's, I'm just trying to manage it a little better and hold a couple of the cards, yes.
Not saying it's a big deal, but what's the difference in cost between renting the machine and purchasing?
Okay, when we budgeted, it was about $2,400.
To a rental?
To, yep.
Okay.
And this is gonna be...
$3128.
Yes. And I budgeted $3,000 specifically for this, but there is enough in capital outlay to do it.
So I'm gonna go out and live and see?
In highway, major and highway local.
Purchasing, purchasing this to save the city money on the long run?
In the long run, we'll be able to, you know, do it as the need arises easier for us.
Does this come out of?
Highway major and highway. Yes.
Okay. I move that we authorize payment not to exceed $3218 for the purchase of an asphalt crack machine and supplies.
I will second this. So motion by Craig, seconded by Genevieve, that we authorize payment not to exceed $3218 for the purchase of an asphalt crack machine and supplies. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No. Motion fails. Takes four votes to spend money.
Okay.
Can you do the roll call, so that you have?
Oh, yes, yes, I do a roll call.
Okay, have to do a roll call.
Good catch, Tom.
Mindy, Gallopik? Your vote, yes? Craig Elliott?
Yes.
Genevieve Cottrell, is he yes?
Say my name?
Christopher Powell?
No.
Thank you. All right. That moves us on to the next order of business, which is possible approval of water tower inspection for portal. This is also you, Tom.
Okay, this company, Dixon Engineering, has done the water tower inspections as far as I can remember and see the reports, way beyond when I was here. I did look into another company that can do, where this is a dry, what they call a dry inspection. We drain the tower, so it'll be offline and will run on pressure, which I've set the wells up to run that way. This is required, and we should, what we're looking at, the last one was done in 2014. DEQ wants to see them every five years, five to seven years or so. So I feel now is a good time to get a handle on where we're at. I already know that the paint's peeling off the top of the tower. From the old reports, there was damage inside. Is it gonna reveal anything new? I could, you know, I don't want it to go too far, and we have to spend major, major money to epoxy and do everything. If we can know upfront what we're dealing with, we can get on with the capital improvements, and in the end, it'll be a reflection in the rate study that we're doing. So the amount would be $3,615, and it would be down approximately a week.
Can you remind me of the capacity of the water towers?
$200,000.
Thank you.
Gals?
Second guess, and not that we have a choice, but does it significantly affect the water pressure in the northern side of the city, or the wells?
No, the wells that run on pressure mode will put blow-offs in various parts of on-fire hydrants, so that the pressure will regulate.
Okay. I guess we need a motion.
Yes, we need a motion.
I move that we contract with Dixon Engineering Inspection Services for a water tower inspection at a cost not to exceed $3615. Unauthorized superintendent of DPW design proposal contract.
I will second that motion. So moved by Craig, seconded by Genevieve, to have John sign the contract with Dixon Engineering for services for water tower inspection at a cost not to exceed $3615. All in, oh, any discussion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, John, when was the last time this was done, the inspection?
2014.
14, 36, 7 years earlier, you don't know?
Five to seven, so we're...
Okay, okay.
You know, I think that now's a good time to do it, because we're doing a rate study to know what our expenses are gonna be.
Okay, okay, good.
And then we can plan this out, you know? I mean, we're already in it. The paint's already 20 years old, so life expectancy of the paint is 15 to 20, somewhere on borrowed time.
What color are we talking? Last, I remember hearing...
Well, this is just, I, I mean, you guys would be able to determine if you wanted to paint it a different color in the end.
Well, so the color red in the sun, it was, it was doing something to our water that, I don't know. The heat of it was, wasn't good for it on the inside. Is that true, or was that just an old lights tail? You know what I'm saying?
Well, the lighter the color, what they've been doing with some of the bowls is painting them white on top or a real light color, and then dark at the bottom of the bowl, so you don't see the beard, if you will, which is some of the mildew that has attached to the tower tank.
Sounds good.
I would say a lighter color.
Light on the top and...
That's predominantly where things have went.
Same reason they paint buses and stuff white on the top, because extends the heat.
In Ann Arbor, they're all yellow on top, so...
Really?
Fill that logic.
Well, they're hotter. They're running their air conditioners hotter than this more often.
But then you can do down the road. First, we need to do the inspection.
Yeah. Yes, and they'll give us a full report. You know, and I can't say if it's gonna, it's probably gonna be more than the 2014 report. Significantly.
And you probably don't have, do you know roughly, what do we cost to paint the whole thing when it's time to do it? And it's, I know it's not something we need tonight, but I was just curious for what...
To do what they recommended last time was about $225,000, inside out. Port holes need to be changed, some securing on the top, there needs to be a painter's rail installed, cathodic protection, so that it doesn't eat holes through the paint.
Okay.
And through the...
I knew it'd be a lot of money, I just didn't...
That's a roughly...
A ballpark, okay. I thank you for that.
And a new tower is probably gonna be in the $2 million range.
And how long is it before that is made? Is this something that you could keep going indefinitely if you take care of it and not have to do that, or...
The size of that tower for Perry right now should be adequate for quite a while.
Yeah.
As I say, 20 years...
Would we have to replace it in 20 years completely, like tear it down, put a new one on?
I don't believe so, but, you know, depends on what happens north of us.
Yeah.
You know, a smaller tower.
Somewhere else too, right? Things like that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So we still, we still need to vote on this one?
Yes, we do. Will you mind to finish the discussion first? So, okay, good discussion. So for this motion, all in favor, signified by aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Fair enough. Next on the list, discussion of repairs to McQueen House. Mindy, this was your item?
Well, I just wondered if we couldn't fulfill the, when we agreed to pay for those repairs, and then it was vetoed, and I would like us to go ahead and pay that difference. So far, they already had paid $6,400, do you know how many it was?
John would be able to help us with what...
Yes.
That's what I have in my records.
On the discussion of McQueen House.
From what Godfrey's have...
The Godfrey repair? What was done and what was left from that?
The gutters were done, the roof was sealed on the, on the south end over the dormer, and some of the siding was repaired.
And how much was that for? How much did we spend on that?
$6,400. I don't know the exact number right off.
That's what I have in my records, was $6,400.
It was a portion of the $15,500. So the remainder would be painting the strip, or scraping it, painting it, the exterior. Nothing was done on the inside that we have done so far.
Okay.
And in that room, I went in there this week, is still, I think the wallpaper has come off the ceiling. They've taken that off, but it's, nothing else has been accomplished in there.
Okay. The rest of the $15,000, that's in your control?
Well, it's the city's...
But you're getting the bills and the receipts?
Yes, John manages the...
Manages the monies, whatever.
Okay.
In fact, the city's representative.
Nothing has been approved yet to move forward with anything else.
Okay. Just that's, that's an odd of money for gutters and...
Gutters are expensive.
And they ended up paying the difference, I guess the historical society to get a round gutter like more historical era.
Okay.
So we're talking, we're getting painting, stripping and painting is what's left of the original, what we had talked about.
Yes, and I think some little bit of foundation work was on that.
The poles from last year too.
So they have, there's still $2,600 left, approximately?
I would assume, I assume we would need to get a new bid.
91.
91 is left.
We originally said we would go 15,500.
I would assume we'd need to get a new bid from that.
Yeah, I don't know if he's still...
I don't know that we can just take the nap and assume that their bid would be the same, if we have to ask them. Because I'm sure the bid's expired right now.
Oh, okay. Sorry, that's my myth, crazy.
I believe that it is still a good bid, that it, there might be increased costs because of waiting.
Probably what you need to do is make a motion to decide to get a new bid based upon what's already been done and what still needs to be done, and what the cost would be if it's changed from last year to this year, is I think what John's saying. So if you wanted to do this, we couldn't rely upon last year's bid, you'd have to make a motion to do a new bid to have them get a...
Well, if John confirmed with them that...
I mean, I can get ahold of Mr. Godfrey and see what situation is. With doing the remainder of the work under that contract that he originally, but I think it had a 30-day duration, something like that. If I'm, I have it in the file, I think it's up here in City Hall, so...
Because like, if something becomes more scarce or something, and they can drive the value of that product up in there, where they don't wanna keep up did it the same, and it's gonna cost them more to do the same bid.
John, how many bids were there in all, do you know? That Billy went ahead and...
Just the Godfrey.
Just the Godfrey bid? Okay.
I mean, I had done a lot of other work prior to going into budget time. I had O'Neill... I had O'Neill Construction and they had foundation people, I mean, I've had, I had bids on just the foundation from Hosford, I think they were Bath or somewhere. Was about eleven thousand and they were gonna dig down and redo everything around the outside. That, so, I mean, that was quite extensive. The other bid was about seven thousand from, and, and he was acting as a general contractor, but a lot of his work was inside and out, doing, redoing the front two rooms. Taking the wallpaper off, that was, there was interior work.
Along with his bid.
Along with it, so.
Okay.
So, and that ended up being fifty?
Seventy-five, I think it was, seventy-five or seventy-eight for everything.
Yeah, it was, to do, yeah, there was.
It was seventy-eight-five, I think, for the total for everything. The fifteen-five was going to be just an exterior.
Okay, it would be O'Neill. There should be one from Hosford Brothers and then O'Neill. And whatever was in that bid, the, he spent an entire day having contractors come in and look at stuff, so I. That was, that was what was asked of me, so that's what I did. You know, to do multiple bids on that. You know, I did have other people come in, some people wouldn't even touch it. They didn't wanna do that.
Because of the age of historical.
Well, just the fussiness about it, you know.
And it's different working, paying for a city as opposed to a, an individual? As far as contracting it out, dealing with?
Well, you know, one guy told me is like, who all is gonna be involved in this? If there are just me, or is there gonna be other people in there, like, well, you need to do this while I'm not there? And he just didn't wanna deal with it. He wouldn't even give me a bid.
He didn't wanna deal with the sub-husband, yeah.
So.
Good business is good for that guy, I betcha. He doesn't have time for something like that, but, I'm, I'm glad that we're, you know, wanna do the diligence and as, as far as the repairs that need to be made, again, on the outside and the roof, which sounds like bone that's done, the gutters are gonna keep it, the water away from the foundation more. And the foundation, I, I've, I've dug, dug out foundations, up from jacking up houses and cleaning it out and laying new block down. That's a lot of money to do anything with the foundation, so that doesn't sound terrible.
So this is a question, how is the foundation in the house?
I don't think that it's terrible, there is a corner that's cracked and what they did is they took and just went over it with like a thin layer of concrete mortar and covered up the rocks and the joints and everything, while all that has gave way. You can just take your finger and pull it off. Is that the right way to fix it? Probably not, I'm not a block guy, so.
With the one where they were gonna pull, dig around and everything like that?
That was more extensive in his quote there, so.
Yeah, it was that kinda like take off with all new, like break down in there.
Well, he was probably gonna, he was gonna dig out the mortar joints and re-mortar everything and then.
Cause that's all stone, isn't it? Is it, yeah, that's all stone foundation?
Yeah, I think there's some poured, old poured stuff in parts of it, but.
Mine is like, my stone's like three foot wide, but once it starts, the crumbling of the mortar. I mean, you're, you're shot, cause it's gonna continue crumbling and so we fix it as fast as we can, because it's gonna be, pull the rocks out and clean it and, and repack it that way and that's gonna make it just a ton more. That's a lot more work to do.
I think a lot of it is just labor.
Do you think a lot of proof the basement? Like spray it with the. To get down and spray it with a black tar, back sealer?
I can't answer that, if that was in there.
Okay.
But we don't have drainage around very good, so there's not a lot of storm drains in the old part of town, so there's not really anywhere for the water to be moved to.
Was that part of this fifteen-five with the foundation stuff? I thought the fifteen-five was fixing the leak and the painting and the eaves.
So, yeah, I think so, because I remember the, the historic society said, the thing that they had talked about, that they were gonna look at doing the foundation.
Yeah.
And then the interior, and then we were, we were doing the outside.
You know, I think it behooves us to invite the president to come to a meeting so we can have time to discuss everything that's gonna be done, what his plans are with the money, because his plans and our plans may be different. But if we get together. Part of the negotiation with them was to finish the Godfrey contract. So they were contemplating the. Finish that, that's. That was part of the negotiations that we had with them. And that was one of the things that they were seeking.
And that's all I'm talking about right now, is to finish that part.
So, so I don't think if council did that, you're spoiling any plans that the historical society has. Why didn't we spoil any plans, just find out we're on the same page, you know, that's all. Not creating a problem for them, they were negotiating for that.
So would you like me to call Mr. Godfrey and revisit the remainder of what's left of that contract?
If that's what we need to do to.
You would need a new bid, you would approve anything.
You need a new bid, cause we can't, we can't approve spending money anyways tonight, can we, on this issue?
No, money has to go on the agenda ahead of time, but we don't at this time know what that is, so.
What that number is, so.
You guys really need to.
A fresh bid or, or that they'll hold to the old bid.
So would you like to make a motion, have John, who was gonna do any of that?
Yes.
John, John, you, you can follow up on that, can't you? You can certainly do a motion if you want, Mindy, but I'm not gonna refuse to cooperate and force you to make a motion to do it. So we'll do that administratively if that's all right with you, we'll get the, so you have the information. You guys can make a good decision.
And then put that on their, is it an agenda item for next time?
Let's give John a chance to get the information.
Okay.
I should be able to get it, but.
Okay.
Depends on.
You only really have to be here once a month for a meeting, correct?
Gonna start over.
Yes.
So I would like. Make sure that what you're going to approve matches up with what they're doing. If we, if we do it blind, then you may end up with a motion that does nothing, because if you go back and you approve the right amount of money and the bid that he gives is higher, you, you could have a problem. Plus, I always like somebody to ask him, well, what would you charge me to do this, instead of saying, I've just approved this much, will you do it? What if you're high? This way you got the information. I don't think we need John to come back in two weeks to give us numbers, I think it can wait till the next. Well, if John's got numbers in two weeks. The first meeting in April? If John's got numbers in two weeks, you can have them in two weeks. I, I just don't wanna tie his hands if Mr. Godfrey's not busy or on vacation and, and he can't get the numbers in two weeks, then it'll push out. I didn't wanna tie his hands on. April, but. Coming to a meeting that, you know, he doesn't have to be at.
I probably wouldn't need to be here. He should really want me to be here.
He seemed pretty trustworthy.
You all, you all, you all can read. Well, I mean, I just, I want to hear your questions or anything else, so.
So the bid will be here next meeting, hopefully, and our nods will be in the first and next one.
Okay, excellent. I'm glad that that discussion on that is moving along, thank you, Mindy. Yeah, I like that, that that one's not being set aside anymore. Okay, any further discussions on that one? No, good, okay, next, mayor's appointment.
I formally appoint Mayor Proton Genevieve Contral to chair the Finance and Ordnance Committee and I submit the appointment to council for your advice and consent.
I didn't make a motion.
I motion that we approve the mayor's appointment of Contral, Genevieve Contral to Finance and Ordnance Committee to replace Mike Queen's vacancy as chairman.
I agree.
Is this something you're interested in?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
None.
All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries, okay.
Are you sure you want to?
It's like signing my own death warrant, okay.
You need to have a good people to work with.
Okay, last, last bit of business before we move on to the finals. Possible adoption of zoning ordinance amendment number three forty-nine. This was read at our last meeting and we can approve it at this meeting.
Do we need to read it again?
We don't need to read it again. We were found on you correctly.
I was ready, but.
No, no.
How might that happen?
No, okay, yes, so if you're ready to do that, we would need a motion to do that.
Chris, you want to?
Good. I'm good, go ahead, bro.
All right. I move that we adopt zoning ordinance amendment number three four nine, an ordinance submitting city zoning ordinance section twelve point zero two and section three point three three regarding industrial districts and similar use, and which was read at the February twenty, twenty twenty council meeting.
Second.
I said two twenty twenty.
All right.
Two, 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 yeah.
Okay, so, move by Craig, seconded by Chris, that we adopt zoning ordinance amendments number three forty-nine, is there any discussion? No discussion, so all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries, thank you from the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have that.
Betcha, sign it up, mayor, okay.
Chris, you're having some pretty heavy stuff to deal with. It's been.
Okay, yay, very good. Any other business that come before council? Yes?
Aye, I'd like to know if there's, I've had a lot of citizens, some of them were here earlier tonight that left, are curious about the damage done to their yards from the snowplows. And I can't afford a couple hundred bucks to have my yard fixed, and so I just wanted to know if, is there anything out there that the city does? No. No doubt, okay, so. Well, we plow, we, we plow the roads for them. Right, I know, cause we wanna leave. We don't wanna ruin the yards, because we'll just leave ice on the road, and I heard that in the text, I believe. Salt goes on ice, not a snowplow, okay? I've lost a foot and a half of my backyard. I've got probably sixty, seventy pound chunks of dirt thrown up into my yard, taking out peony stands or whatever the heck the flowers are. They had to go, they had, somebody had to go really fast down the alley. And, and I know you're gonna get over an inch or two. I have pictures on my phones that two summers ago, I could do a whole circle around my telephone pole in the back by the alley. A whole time and then a strip, a little bit of a strip, it's six inches, it's six inches away from my, it, it destroyed my backyard. And so I'd like, you, maybe you could drive by and, and take a look at it for me? I'd appreciate it.
Great manner.
I'm out today. Have a good night, you did a great job.
Thank you, Chris. Any other discussion or observations from the council at this time? Okay, very good. So we have our agenda items for the next meeting.
Well, because it's there.
Okay, discussion for retirement benefits, Craig? Yes, okay, and for the bid of, if that is back from John for McQueen House? Yes, okay. And was there anything else that we needed to look at that I am missing? No? Okay.
Is there a way if something was voted no this today, that we could still bring up and try to put another vote on it?
Yeah, we only have four council members here, so I would suggest that the possible approval of the asphalt crack machine supplies be placed on the next agenda.
Very good, okay, we'll put that there as well.
Something of essential.
I agree, okay.
Yes, and the city attorney has been very clear, vetoes or no votes do not compel council not to reconsider. You can bring motions as many times as you want.
All right, let's do it.
So I guess John resubmit that proposal next, next time.
Please. Okay, okay, I think that's it, folks, so that brings our meeting to a close at nine sixteen PM.